Starting our meeting at 5:30 so that we can have a workshop concerning the Scarborough Downs project in which the town is actively involved. We're going to hold questions till the end. If we run, we are trying to plan the schedule so that there's plenty of time for council questions at the end. And I'd also like to be able to have the public have the opportunity. And if the public doesn't have the opportunity because we run out of time and get to seven o'clock, then I would encourage everyone to use the public comment time at the beginning of the seven o'clock meeting for that purpose. Councilor Hayes is coming, but will be a bit late due to some family matters. And Councilor Katerina is out of town. So that we can all introduce ourselves to each other for those who have not met and to the public that's here in attendance and watching on TV. Why don't we go around and identify each other? We'll start with Councilor Foley.
Kate Foley, Town Council.
Thank you. I'm Will Rowan, I'm also on the Town Council.
Dan Bacon from Gurrel Palmer, working with the Downs.
Rocky Rizberra, developer.
Jim Demesis, working with the Downs.
Karen Martin, Scarborough Economic Development Corporation.
Tom Hall, Town Manager.
Bill Donovan, Councilor.
Chris Chieso, Councilor.
Sean Daylon, Town Council.
Peter Michio, Crossroads Team Member.
And Elizabeth Tibbetts, I'm an attorney for the Crossroads Team.
Great. And we have Peter Zeriv, good, perfect timing. And we have a five-person presentation this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to Town Manager Tom Hall.
Yes, thank you Chairman Donovan. As he made the request, just because we have a fair amount of work to get, or slides and material to get through with five different presenters, I think it may be easiest if you allow us to kind of work right to the end of that. We have all agreed under solemn oath to make sure there's enough time in the back end, at least a half an hour or more. So with that, I'll get this discussion started. So tonight, we're really coming together, in my view, for three basic purposes. One, we really want to check in on this, the vision for the Downs. There's a lot of historical basis, there's some more recent updating conversation in the community around this. So for staff, part of this, and I think for the development team as well, is just kind of check in, reaffirm, validate that we're working in the right direction. Secondly, a ton of work has occurred over the last six or eight months, and the folks from the Downs, I think, would love to share some of their, some of the fruits of that effort, that labor. So we want to give them a good opportunity to share with the council, with the public, kind of how that vision is starting to emerge from their eyes. And lastly, and certainly not least important, we really want to start to introduce this concept of a downtown tech, which would be the basis, kind of the backdrop for further partnership. And that tool, that vehicle, will enable the town to do other things beyond a public-private partnership elsewhere in that district. So that's an important piece that we want to get through as well. So with that, to the vision piece, we want to look back at some of the foundational pieces. These are actual excerpts from the 2006 comp plan regarding the Downs property. And that plan really called for a visionary development plan to be developed. And you'll see some of the key words. Again, these are excerpts exactly from the plan. New heart of Scarborough, possibility to create a Main Street, or the gateway potentially. So that was sort of the kind of themes 12 years ago. And out of that plan, we did adopt what we call the Crossroads zoning district, which is unique to this property. And in that definition, it really expanded upon that vision that was set out way back in '06. And the sort of key words that we've walked out of that Crossroads district are vibrant center, the heart of Scarborough, community meeting places for people to meet, gather, and for, to cross paths. So that's sort of the foundational pieces that have been in place for some time, frankly. And were in place at the time these folks bought the property and had this, these expectations, I think, up front. More recently, last fall, we re-engaged the community as part of this update to our comprehensive plan. We called it Imagine the Future. It was kind of the theme of those series of community conversations. And there again, you'll see the sort of, these aren't excerpts, they're more kind of themes that emerged out of those multiple community conversations. Again, these are comments specific, the themes specific to the Downs property. Community gathering, connect, live-work opportunities, sense of community, significant asset. And the whole notion of community center, in my participation in all of those community events, was probably the most common theme that came up. I don't think I attended one where that didn't come up from one person or another. So it's worth noting that that came up most recently specifically. And then, just in the last several weeks, we actually had the first draft of the comp plan. This is kind of the consultant's draft. And essentially, the consultants listened intently to what feedback provided last fall and throughout the winter months. And they've tried to distill that down and put this in front of us, and it's now our time to kind of work with it and make it our plan. But again, those same sort of themes emerged, not surprisingly, from the first draft of the plan. So we really, from staff's point of view, we see this as kind of reaffirming the vision, if you will. And with that, it gives us some comfort that we want to take the temperature and kind of continue to check in that that, you know, that's the direction we should be going because we've invested a lot of time and effort, and these folks have invested a lot of money in kind of pursuing what that vision might look like. So the opportunity really that was presented to us eight months ago or so was that the vision could become a reality. The fact is, we weren't going to be able to do this on our own with public finance. It's simply beyond our reach and capability. But now we have a ready, willing, and able developer that is primed and very anxious to get moving forward. So that opportunity is just that, that local committed team who appears to share our vision. And I'll characterize it that way. I'll let you have, form your own opinion, but they'll show you some slides and some ideas of the planning work that they've been undertaking, and let you form your own opinion in that regard. And I guess the backdrop for tonight and going forward is, we really need to, in fact, the zone requires it, that we shape this plan together, that it's not done one way or another, that it really needs to be a partnership. And so that notion of public-private partnership really is a thing that runs through and needs to be kept in mind. And I'm going to let Rocky Rizberra talk a bit more about some of their vision.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't stop a little history. And you're looking at some pictures of Oak Hill and pictures of the Downs, and I just want to point out that my family chose to move to Scarborough in 1968. And my parents chose Scarborough for several reasons. Its proximity to Portland, its natural beauty, and such as the marshes and the beaches, and the fact that they had open land with good zoning in place, and it would enable the creation of a new town. Scarborough at that time was not like other towns that had some idea of a hundred-plus-year-old Main Street, if you will. It really was essentially a blank canvas. And the Scarborough Downs, to us, is a blank canvas. My dad went very closely with the first town manager, Bob Steele, back in the very early 1970s, when he found some land on Sawyer Road that became available. And he looked at it to build some houses on, and it occurred to him that the town really needed to own that land. And he went to Bob Steele, and he worked with the council, and they figured out a way for the town to acquire that. That site is where a big portion of the school campus is today. My point to this is that we've always felt we had a partnership with the town of Scarborough. We've worked for 50 years literally building this town. We live here, we raise our families here, it's important to us. We spent a lot of time thinking about this. And if you look at this picture, I think it's great because it shows the Downs' proximity to Oak Hill and other areas, and yet, the upper left-hand corner shows you how remote it really is. And it kind of demonstrates that it's undeveloped. And all of its utilities, although it has utilities available to it, they're all on the outskirts of the property. So that becomes a very good factor when you're thinking about trying to develop such a large site. Just to throw out some numbers, a lot of people probably really know already, but we have 500 acres here, above 300 of which is developable. So there's about 200 that we think are wetlands, but it's a significant site, certainly the largest development, I would say, in southern Maine, probably in Maine, maybe even New England at this point in time. And I think that's very important to note. And when the Downs became available, we recognized it had tremendous potential. Partnering with the Michu brothers had allowed us to secure the site and to put together a team with some pretty impressive credentials. It's real, real thinking power and ability. So we've tried to move forward in trying to answer, you know, what we think the town wants. And we've, you know, we've secured the site in January, that was a big deal. You know, 17 other parties had tried to buy this place and had put it together. We bought it, we own it. We've been working on a preliminary master plan for the site, and we think that that master plan incorporates a lot of the amenities that the comprehensive plan suggests, but also the amenities that people are telling us they want. I mean, none of the partners can go to Hanford without somebody giving them direction on what they think the Downs should incorporate for amenities. This, you know, this site is going to allow us, with a partnership with the town, to incorporate a lot of those amenities.
Yeah, how do I advance the slide?
Arrow down.
Oh yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Some of you folks had seen a slide like this before. It's showing the outline of the Downs overlaid on the Portland Peninsula. Now, we're not showing you this because we think that we're going to build everything that you see within the outline of the property. But we're showing you this to get a sense of scale and have you recognize that it is a project of unprecedented size, its opportunity, and it has positive impacts and community benefits that can happen here. If you think about what's within the shape of the Downs on the Portland Peninsula, many, many uses that can co-mingle, but also a massive amount of infrastructure needs to be, needs to be brought in to accomplish a build-out. We've worked very diligently on a master plan, and what you're looking at is our result of that work. This master plan is showing what we would envision as an ultimate build-out, highest and best use of all of the property. With a partnership, with a town, we think we can accomplish 40% of open space, 20%, light industrial manufacturing area, 20% commercial and civic area, and 20% residential. This is a very, very healthy mix of commercial and residential. And within that residential, we can have a very healthy mix of types of residential. So when you think about residential, it's not all three-bedroom houses. It can be condominiums, it can be apartment units, it can be elderly housing. That all fits within our 20% of the residential. So that's the point of the slide. Dan's going to take you through, you up next, Dan? We're highlighting the core of the Downs and what we think could very well be that town center, that Main Street that everybody desires. So Dan's going to give you a little information on that.
Great. Thanks, Rocky. I guess we'll do the fun stuff and talk about the potential downtown. And our team, coupled with Nick Aceto and his team, our landscape architect, and Caleb Johnson Studios, and we've been working hard on trying to kind of blend the goals of the development team with what Tom laid out right off the bat in the introduction round. The goals for a vibrant center, the goals for a new heart of the community, the goals for not a traditional kind of wave on Main Street, but a modern-day, active, mixed-use downtown. And so as Rocky indicated, we see that occurring right in the core of the property and ultimately being the focal point of this project. That outline is approximately 40 acres, plus or minus five acres, and this zooms in on that vision. And we see really the grandstands. That doesn't work up there, right? The grandstand building is here. Thanks, Rocky. So to orient you, this is the grandstands today. You obviously don't see the track. We think the highest and best use, at the end of the day, is an active downtown environment that's a focal point for the town and a focal point for this project. We see the grandstands as being renovated and becoming a mixed-use building with civic space, with commercial, some restaurants, some retail, and a potential marketplace and focal point for the project. We see a very healthy town common, or center common, that would be the heart of the project. This is a, this is a four-to-five acre green space that could have events, that could have recreation areas, that could be a gathering place. We see these two features as being landmarks and the focal point of development that would happen around it. So this is showing essentially a town square in green, some mixed-use developments, some residential development, potential hotel, mixed-use development here. And we see this being knit in with a potential Main Street, and a Main Street that ties from Higginson Parkway out to Payne Road and relates to that square. And right here, we anticipate, we see the opportunity for a community center that could be serving all the different population in the community, and be a focal point, again, for the project, but also for the community as a whole. To kind of give you a sense of what that can look like, these are some images of, again, the grandstands becoming a new mixed-use building. It would be saved, it's a landmark building, it's unique, it could be really the focal point of the project in this space. This is a potential Main Street in the background, and development along that central common. This is an early concept of that Main Street. This would be looking down from the main road coming into the site towards that common with the grandstands up in this area and a community center here. This gives an idea of the grandstands with the community center right on the primary corner, activated. This would be a plaza with pedestrians, bicyclists, a gathering place for, again, for the project, but also for the community. This is the idea of the grandstands being a civic, commercial building with a view out towards, up towards the downtown.
Third floor.
Third floor. And as Rocky indicated, with a partnership, that Jim's going to get into, there's the opportunity for a very healthy balance in the mix of development, that's 20% residential, 20% commercial, light industrial, and 40% open space. Yeah, continuing on, Jim.
Thanks, Dan. So just to reintroduce myself, I'm Jim Demesis, I'm with Camoin Associates, and I've been working with the Downs team primarily on the market analysis. So I'm going to try to take four months of market analysis work and boil it down into two slides, which is, I'd like to have more, but that's okay, we can do it in two. That's what Q and A is for. So the pie chart on the left shows the projected development area by land use with a partnership. That's what Rocky's already shown. Balanced residential, commercial, and civic in the red, showing 20%, 20% residential, light industrial and manufacturing, 20%, and 40% open space, which is critical in terms of being a balanced mix because you're both achieving a significant amount of non-residential development, but you're not doing so at the expense of open space. You're also protecting a lot of space, which is critical for mixed-use development in terms of the market. Plus, it's stuff that we all know in Scarborough, we desire highly. We ran market analyses in terms of what would be possible given current zoning and current market demand, and so what's allowable, but what's also driven in the market. And you can see on the right-hand side that without a partnership, a significant partnership, the mix would be more highly residential because it's being demanded in the market, and less commercial, 10% commercial, 15% light industrial and manufacturing, and 35% open space. So I just want to be really clear. Scenario two there, without a partnership, it's allowable, that's based on the reality of current law, current land use regulations, and current market analyses. However, with a partnership, because you're able to put in place critical infrastructure, you can get to that both intensity and mix that Tom referred to that was on the, some of the early slides around the comp plan in terms of what was needed in the market. So another way to look at it is what a partnership can achieve. So this carries out over 20 years, and it's forecasted assessed value creation and the rate at which it's created with and without a partnership. So the same mix that we were just talking about with a partnership versus without a partnership exists on this slide, or is presented on this slide. So you can see that without a partnership and, again, grounded in the market analysis, so based on market analysis and data, you can achieve roughly $225 million of new value. And because of the speed and the amount and density of development, you would not get to a downtown. You would not have the critical infrastructure, the volume of activity and demand in place to be able to build the Main Street that Dan just showed you on those slides. With the, with a significant partnership, and because you're putting critical infrastructure in place sooner rather than later, you're going to be able to get to both, A, developing happening quicker, at a faster rate over that 20 years, and then an amount that is going to be both greater, you can see $600,000, $600 million there versus $225 million of value. And we all know that value relates to taxes, tax revenues, if you will. So you're going to be able to generate more revenues with that. And critically, the final point I want to make is that you're able to get the downtown activation. Without that partnership on the yellow line or the flatter line on the bottom there, you're not able to get a downtown development. So you get more residential, less commercial and industrial, and the market will not be able to support a downtown development. Let me turn it back over to Dan for, continuing.
Thanks, Jim. The next slide we want to walk you through is really outlining what Rocky introduced earlier on. He showed the area of Oak Hill with the Downs in the background. And then that other image of the Downs and how close it is to Oak Hill, to exit 42, to critical infrastructure, but then again, how far it is when you actually look at the length of, the length of infrastructure extensions necessary to serve this property. So on this, in this plan, you'll see from Greg, the Downs in our first days that we've been working hard with the planning board on. This shows, in the first phase, we're really building the first phase to enable future phases to come. This project is all about staging development at the right time with market conditions, investing heavily upfront with significant capital outlay to enable revenue on the back end by phase, and to work towards that downtown, and to work towards that balance that both Rocky and Jim presented. So the first phase of development shows a significant early investment to not only serve that phase, but to install all the utilities and the road system that's going to serve the rest of the project from Route 1 to the core. The next phase, and what we're beginning to put plans together to submit to the, to the planning board for review second, is a light industrial area. And that area is on the total opposite end of the property, it's up by Payne Road. And there's, this infrastructure needs to be installed first to activate that area. And we worked closely with you as the council to have that area zoned for light industrial to spur economic development, to generate significant tax revenue. But to get to that tax revenue, that employment, that economic development, this is a necessary investment to activate that area. And it's really based on locations and utilities. Right now, there's no sewer out on Payne Road, it's only in Higginson Parkway along Route 1. So there's a significant sewer extension and road infrastructure coming in from Payne Road and collector streets to activate that area. Once sewer is installed from Higginson Parkway, the next significant investment is a main artery street from Higginson Parkway that connects all the way up to Payne Road. And that can spur the second phase of commercial development, which we anticipate being along Higginson Parkway, and be a healthy mix of retail, office, commercial-type development to stick to that 20%, 20%, 20% goal that we have for the project. So these first three phases, we have a residential phase, a light industrial phase, and a commercial phase, and then a lot of open space, as you can see in green, to say true to the desired development mix. From there, the next big lift is the infrastructure to serve the core, which is sewer extension, main roads, additional greenways, trails, et cetera, to achieve the amenities desired for that downtown. And that enables that next phase, and so on. So the final phase also requires, again, major collector streets and utility extensions to round out the project, and again, to achieve that goal of 20, 20, 20, 40. So looking at this, we've broken down our project costs as what we see as base costs. And the base costs are the typical costs that a development project bears. Those are the base road and utility infrastructure, the local streets. A typical project is not remote to utilities, so there's utilities in the street, you're building a new subdivision, you're extending utilities from there. So there's significant base road and utility infrastructure costs that we've accounted for. There's typical earthwork and site prep, there's typical stormwater management, impact fees, school traffic, et cetera. And there's design and permitting process. And for a project of this scale, that's generating $600 million of revenue, those basing, those base fees or base infrastructure costs are about 25%, so $150 million of base costs. And that's common. If you think about it, maybe at a subdivision level or a lot development level, about 25% of the cost is preparing a site for a buildable lot. So that's really the base cost. On the other side is the extraordinary. These are the costs that enable us to unlock the value and the development potential of this project. So those are the entry and collector streets highlighted in red. Those are the extraordinary utility, utility extensions and arteries and pump stations that are installed early in each phase and early in the project to activate the project and create development value following that significant investment. It's the off-site intersection improvements and transportation improvements. It's a framework for the downtown. It's additional greenway amenities that we wouldn't typically do with a standard project. And there's some environmental restoration opportunities in this project. There's some roads that actually could come out and be revegetated into wetlands. There's large wetland areas that have been impacted over the years by the current operation that we anticipate restoring and incorporating into the project as amenities and assets. So all of those extraordinary costs are totally So all of those extraordinary costs are totaled up to $115 million for a total Downs project cost of $265 million. And those are the costs that we see as enabling infrastructure costs and downtown costs that can activate value for this project, which rocks it up.
Thank you, Dan. So those numbers are big, very large, quite staggering actually, when you total them all up. But we've taken on challenges before, and we think with a partnership with the town, we can ultimately get what everybody wants here. The enabling infrastructure activates value, sort of that, starting on the outside, chipping our way in, if you will. Enabling infrastructure activates value, which enables a downtown community amenities, which activates more value. It just, it just makes sense. We just keep working our way in until we, we get to the core and get to the, get to the really good stuff. And we need, we need a partnership with the town on that. Did I go the wrong way? There we go. So our key points for tonight, and then I'll, I'll sit down. Downtown TIF is critical to maximize the value, community benefits throughout the TIF district. Downtown TIF is an economic development tool necessary to attract and compete in the region. We have to think about ourselves in this region as having to compete. There are other projects in other towns around us that are, to some extent, competing with some of the same end-users as we will be. Scarborough needs to get its fair share. It's the only way we're going to fix the mix of revenue in this town, and it's very important that we have the tools so that we can compete in the region. Our vision requires a public-private partnership. And when I say that, what I mean is a credit enhancement agreement. The only way to get a credit enhancement agreement is to have a TIF district. The town has to create that. We, this credit enhancement agreement will enable us to, it enables an initial investment in the project and the ability to realize this vision. These pictures that we've shown you are, you know, what we think we've heard that everybody wants, and we think it, it really is, is a, is a home run, knocking it out of the park based on what we've been told people seem to want. So we think that's very important. The credit enhancement agreement enables this to happen. And what we're asking for and what we want people to understand, we're looking for a performance-based credit enhancement agreement. It ensures the developer assumes all of the project funding and the risk. We're not asking the town to float a bond for anything. We're not asking the town to put any infrastructure in the ground. It's 100% on us. We find the money, we put it in the ground, we make it happen. The town helps us by giving some of the tax money back to us. That's how the process works. If a dollar does not get paid in, a dollar does not get paid out to us. And I think that's very important because I know we're going to be compared to other TIFs that have happened in the town, and a lot of those TIFs have not been done in this manner. I think that's, that's a critical point to understand. And I think that's, Pete, have I missed, missed anything in wrapping up? Well done. We'll pass it off to Karen, I guess, and we should have time for questions. Thank you.
So while the Downs team has been busy working on different development scenarios and really trying to blend what they think are the community values and some of the community assets that we've been talking about, that we've heard from the comprehensive plans, we've been doing it, we've been coming at it from the other side. We've been taking some of their input and saying, what does that really mean to us? How do we assimilate some of this information? And for me, the only way I can get my hand around things is to start to look at what we're really talking about from an economic impact at build-out. So we took some of the build-out numbers and we looked at different multipliers and different estimates, and we're estimating somewhere between 2,500 and 3,100 jobs are going to get created on the Downs at, during this build-out scenario. It's somewhere around 1.7 million square feet of commercial space, office, industrial, you know, and retail and service. We generated the, the tax revenues ourselves, and we came up with really $600 million per year at build-out in taxable value. And it's across diverse sectors, and that's really important. The diversity of the mix of uses helps really to even out the flows of tax revenues if one particular type of business isn't doing as well as others. So just like you want diversity in your employment sector, you want diversity in your tax base. We know that between property tax and a loose estimate of excise tax at build-out, we're really talking about 10.9, let's call it $11 million in tax revenues at today's rates. We've done some general work on the costs associated with serving this particular facility at the rate at which they're talking about building. We find that at this point, it's a net positive. We're still working on those, those numbers, and as they refine their building plans, we'll be refining those as well. But we really see at this point, it's a net positive, and again, we'll be bringing you some more detail on that at our next meeting. And we've really looked at the mix of uses, and we've looked at this longstanding goal that's in the 2006 comprehensive plan that says we should try or we should aim for 25% of the valuation within the town coming from non-residential development. And this project does move us toward that 25%. We're about 22% now. Our estimate is that's moving us to 23, maybe a little more percent of non-residential value. This one project alone moves that needle. The other thing I like to take a look at is, all right, if you plucked down the development proposal as it is now at build-out, if you put it in today's world, what would that really mean? So in terms of the total number of units, you'd see about 18% of the total housing units happening at the Downs, about 15% of the population, 22% of retail and service square footage, about 15% of office, and just under 19% for industrial. And that just helps gauge and helps us understand the scale of this project. We could talk about acres and those types of things, but it's helpful to look at this from really the, the structures and the building. And one of the things that I think we haven't really talked about as much is we're looking right now just at the Downs, but this project has a ripple effect throughout the town. So as you see housing units and population moving into the Downs, that creates demand in other sectors, that creates demand for all the businesses in Oak Hill as well as what happens with Downs. So we're really looking at a very narrow impact. We think those economic development impacts are really much greater than just the existing This is the largest single development in our history and may well be the largest single development in our future as well. It really is creating unprecedented amounts of new value and revenue for the town. And it's, it's why we're taking a serious look at this for a lot of reasons, and we really think we've got the vision from our foundation documents, and we have the local committed partner to really begin to make our vision, working with us to make our vision come through, come true. And now it really is to, to us, how do we make it happen? They've told you some of the things that they need to, to make the project happen. We came from it from a, the public sector standpoint. What does this opportunity do for us? What's our strategy? Not just about working with the Downs and helping the project go forward, but what does it mean for planning? What does it mean for our community? And one of the things we've really looked at, again, partly because the downtown TIF is, drives us toward this, but it's also about the future of the community and some of the foundation work that was done in the original documents to say, we've got the Downs that's going to create some new community spaces, some more traditional main street items, and we've got Oak Hill, which most people think of as really our village center. We've zoned it that way. And we really feel like between the two, between Oak Hill and the Downs, we're beginning to create or to foster this wider view of what a town center can be. Again, we've got loads of wonderful village uses that are in Oak Hill, and the Downs is giving us an opportunity to have perhaps the town square, the community center, those things that you would typically think of in a town center that we're just not going to get in Oak Hill at this point. So we looked at the blending of these two areas, looking at from a strategy standpoint. We also wanted to look at the Department of Economic and Community Development. What do they say a downtown is? And we really feel like the combination of Oak Hill and the Downs really meets this concept of what a town center, what a town center is. You know, it's a center of socio-economic interaction. You know, it's characterized by cohesive core of commercial and mixed-use buildings. It's got public spaces, it's served by utilities. So in essence, blending these two areas really does fulfill this definition of really a town center. And what we see is this opportunity to blend our history, which is a commitment to our villages. We've always had a commitment to fostering villages. What we're doing is taking Oak Hill, which has been zoned for this village-style development, and we're wrapping that up and trying to blend it with this modern opportunity that's coming along. And so Oak Hill does still have infill opportunities, and we want to foster those, and we want to, again, treat Oak Hill as part of our town center and along with the Downs. And the Downs being shaped by input from the town really can design those public spaces that we don't have right now. Oak Hill and the Downs, they flank the municipal campus, so you have the municipal campus sort of being that central organization of the town center, if you will. And then you do have some of Route 1 that's running from Oak Hill intersection to really the Downs entrance, and there's commercial development already happening there, and we think there's some really great connectors that we can make along Route 1 to start to blend these two areas together. So this is a little bit hard to see, and, and we should have done some crosshatching, but I just want to show you what, what we're talking about from a, a town center concept. And again, we're looking at the geography for both how we... That's all right. We're trying to use the, the town center concept as both a geography for a TIF if we, if we go down that road, but also just as a, as how would we join these two areas together? And what we did, for simplicity's sake, is we took all of the village, town and village centers that zoned, zoning district within Oak Hill, we took all of the town and village center too, which is also a village zone. We blended that with the municipal campus, and then we looked at Route 1, which is B3, and then we went up into the Downs. So that's really how we came up with this geography, and we wanted to, you know, ensure that we were, at least had some good planning concepts down. And we did meet with the Long Range Planning Committee Friday before last, on August 3rd, and they agreed with us about the geography and felt like there was this opportunity to blend Oak Hill and the Downs and come up with really an area that is both sustainable, it has economic development growth potential, and it meets some of the public needs that we've been talking about in terms of having ways to, for people to gather, meet, and spend time together. So again, I think we just talked about the town center boundaries, all the TBC, TBC 2, portion of Route 1, and those are the acreage associated with each of the segments. There's a, I don't think we listed the, the B3 areas, about 50 acres. So altogether, I think we're just under around 900 acres in there, and we're still refining that the edges a bit. So remember, we're not just thinking about the Downs, we're thinking about town center. And so we went back and we looked at all the different projects that were out there that have been defined, either in terms of existing studies or from the comp plans, the Oak Hill pedestrian study. And these are the types of projects that have already been identified, both the traffic calming efforts, perhaps new connector roads, access management improvements, traffic signal improvements, transit shelters. You see a theme with transportation since that's certainly traffic and, you know, moving traffic through Oak Hill is, was such a big part of Planapalooza that we wanted to make sure that we're focusing on some of those types of projects. Again, we've got some stormwater treatment issues, we've got signage, you know, bicycle lanes, and, you know, we are putting the community center in this list of potential town center projects. And so now we've sort of come full circle back to this idea of the tax increment financing districts. And first, we want to remind people, just as Rocky did, that a tax increment financing district, it's an economic development tool first and foremost. And I think of it fairly simply in saying, it either encourages the public sector to do investment in supportive economic development, or it encourages and shapes the private sector investment, generally through a credit enhancement agreement. Anything that comes out of this encouragement of both the public sector or the private sector is really from, can only be derived from new revenues that are created based on new development. So it's not like we can repackage any existing tax revenues that are coming into the town. This has to be new revenues generated by the project. And we focused in on the downtown TIF for a couple of reasons, actually, three reasons. One, it does provide more flexibility than the other types of TIF designations, and that flexibility really comes in with the ability to finance structures that may be used by the public. Other TIF districts, you really can't do that. And the downtown TIF, it doesn't count towards a legislative cap. Each community can only have a certain percentage of acreage and value in a TIF district. But the downtown TIF, because of its importance, the legislature has said, you can do that separately and not count that towards your cap. So it provides, it preserves our flexibility in many respects to look at future development projects. And the downtown TIF has one more requirement. It, it requires that your expenditures are grounded in strategy. And that's really part of why we're talking to the Long Range Planning Committee. It's why we've been so careful about wanting to go back to our foundation documents, is to say, there's strategy already pointed out. We've been talking about this for 20-plus years, and this is our opportunity to begin to make some of these things happen. And this is not...
So as Karen was mentioning, the TIF is the really base document or requirement. It's what really enables, one, the town to direct certain investments in certain areas and that laundry list of different projects. I don't want to suggest that we would want to do all of those or could afford to do all of those, but that's just a list of projects that have been discussed and considered in the past. So not only does it help us, give us the ability to direct funds to do things that we think are important within the district and in some cases outside of the district, but it also is the enabling piece that allows us to do a partners, financial partnership with a private entity. And that's the piece that's been alluded to over and over again. The vehicle through which that happens is through this credit enhancement agreement. And despite our best efforts, we've been negotiating in earnest for better part of two months at this point, and still have some further work to do. And we had hoped to be able to share some of those details tonight. What we do expect is to have another workshop where we specifically focus on that component of this conversation. But as we go forward, I thought it might be helpful just to remind or maybe advise for the first time, what I've been using and our negotiating team has been using as kind of our guiding principles in these ongoing conversations. First and foremost, the town must benefit. Obviously, there is a benefit to the private interest, but if we can't answer that question, we shouldn't be having the conversation. So that, that has to be the first question answered firmly. Secondly, no upfront investment. Rocky alluded to the fact, there's some past tips whereby the town put the money out and then not performed well, and we've learned our lesson. So as was said, that's not been asked for, that's not part of the conversation, it won't be. We're really looking to fund only those aspects of, of the project that have a, a public benefit. And also, I think extraordinary costs fall into that category. Some of that was touched on earlier. Having them as much performance-based as possible, that they are rewarded by their good performance, if you will. And in particular, depending on which elements that we want to incentivize through this vehicle, we may want to develop very specific performance standards to assure we get what we're most interested in. For instance, the community center, that ends up being a central part of the conversation. I think there ought to be very specific performance standards to give us the assurance right now that at some point in the future, we're going to get what we most dearly want. And lastly, a notion that has been undeniably a bit of a sticking point, caps based on agreed-upon costs. Those costs are staggering, as was mentioned. They're also, that work is ongoing, and at this point, we've relied entirely on the Downs team for those costs. We'd like to do some of our own kind of truth testing of those numbers. But I think having caps around agreed-upon costs is a really important component. So next steps, as I alluded to, we expect to conclude our negotiations and discussions on the credit enhancement agreement in the next couple of weeks, 10 days or so. And I'll be asking Chairman Donovan to schedule a workshop before your next public meeting on September 5th, at which we would share the details of that arrangement. And that same evening at your regular meeting, we'd ask for you to schedule a public hearing. That's a statutory requirement. There's a 10-day notice associated with that public hearing, and we'd hold that on September And we've built in some extra layers of process here. The statute does not require that. Council could take action on the 19th, should you wish. But I think everyone at the table is, is committed to keeping their head down and working through this in a timely fashion, in a timely fashion. So we want to move it as quickly as you're comfortable, but we do want to keep pace. And perhaps the Downs team can speak more to the criticality of, of time to them. So with that, we actually have 35 minutes, so we gained five minutes here. I think I'll have everyone return back to the, to the table here, and we'd love to open up for questions, and we'll do our best to respond.
Let's start with the questions that the town council may have. Will Rowland.
I had two questions for Karen based on the slides. Did you say we're currently at a 21% and this would move us to a 23% based on current?
Yeah, I think we're somewhere, it, it all depends on how you calculate too, but about 22% calculated in the same way. This moves us to, I think, just beyond 23%.
Gotcha, and that was the, the non-residential percentage evaluation?
Correct.
And then the other thing you referred to was the, the net positive toward the services that would be required. I assume that is without considering any kind of credit enhancement?
Correct, correct.
And do we have, we run the numbers? Sorry, I was falling.
It's okay.
Thank you.
I think we're just going to go right around the table, if that works for everybody.
Great. So then I can, I could do a couple more?
Go right in.
Thank you. I've got the notes here, yeah. So did you look at any numbers regarding the mix that they showed, where it would be 40% residential, 10% commercial?
And that's what we haven't done, and that's what we need to do to give you a good, a good comparison. And, yeah, and there's a, there's a lot of assumptions obviously built into forecasting services 20 years in advance, but we've, we've done a, we've done our best.
And these are all today, in today's dollars?
Exactly, in today's dollars.
But what we do know is that alternative mix of development, kind of the market-driven, if you will, and what's permissible through local zoning, current zoning, simply the residential people are alone, going from 20 to 40% adds significantly to the cost of the town.
Okay. And then I think this question is for Jim, but the, when you were talking about the open space, I assume, or the percentage, the pie chart, was that of the 300 acres or the 500 acres with 200 of wetland is the?
It's 500.
It's out of the 500?
Right.
Okay, so the wetland would be roughly 40%? How did you get then to a 30, 35%?
Wetlands closer to 35%.
Oh, okay.
And we're planning for, under the desired development plan, to have significant greenways and additional open space beyond wetland. So that's that 5% difference, including that town square, among other things.
Last question. Have you, have you done any kind of, or given any consideration to what it might look like? We have wonderful drawings of the, you know, the, the kind of desired outlay, but if, at the, at the other mix, has there been any kind of visualization, what that might?
We haven't spent a lot of time on it, because that's not our desired. But we, you know, that's something we can look at. We do have a sense of, we have the best sense of the pattern or how development would occur without a partnership. And that would really be Route One towards, towards the core, because that's, that's what would be sort of initially affordable in terms of infrastructure investment. So that would forego the light industrial area in the short term.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Council of Foley, we'll finish this side, and then we'll work our way around.
Sure. I don't have a ton of questions at this point, just because I feel like we're still looking at this from, you know, 50,000-foot view, and we really need more details. I'd love it if we can share this PowerPoint for one. The more materials, for me anyway, that I can have in my hand ahead of time, the easier it is for me to be thoughtful about the questions that I do have. One thing that a citizen asked me, and I didn't have an answer, and I don't know if this is the right time, but I'll throw it out there, is in the credit enhancement agreement, is there an opportunity for some kind of assurance that if for some reason, five years down the road, this isn't working for this partner, is there some assurance that they would then sell to an out-of-state developer? Can that be worked in somehow?
I don't believe so, but that's an important construct. I mean, I think we've got a tremendous rapport, working relationship. I believe what these, these folks are genuine in their intent, but things can happen. So you're right, that document needs to stand on its own, and we need to be comfortable with it regardless of who is on the other side.
And, yeah, and I would say their local presence and here has a huge benefit for us as entering the partnership. If it were someone from out of state, I would be much more leery of things. I'm going to hold off on anything else for now.
That's okay.
Yeah, I actually got quite, quite a few. I think most of them are kind of hopefully fairly easy. Do you guys, how do, how do you guys plan to develop or address the affordable housing requirements? Are you going to do on a pod-by-pod basis? Are you going to do it overall, or kind of how's your, what you're planning?
Yes, as, as we work through with the pods, you know, residential piece with 10% requirement, we'll be meeting those requirements as we go. We do have some opportunity here for, you know, certain projects that could, if you will, you know, cover other areas if they're large enough, and we'll, and we'll be working that in.
Okay.
But we pretty much got our first piece figured out, and the next pieces will be, will be coming. But we fully intend to apply that.
Okay.
That's probably something that the public, the little background to that is that this zone is unique in that it's the only zone in town that mandates that 10% of all the housing that goes in be affordable housing, workforce housing, as is defined by the zoning ordinance, the crossroads zoning ordinance.
Kristin, would you mind elaborating, if you can, on the mix of your housing units? Because I think that's important from a market standpoint on affordability, I think.
Sure. You want to hit that, Dan? You've got the numbers on top of your head.
Yeah, so with our desired build-out scenario, we're really focused on really doing 25% in four different markets. So single-family, senior condo, and apartment. So the goal is to have very diverse housing opportunities, and then within each of those buckets, if you will, or percentages, there's going to be 10% that's going to be affordable.
What kind of timeframe do you see for developing the core sections for your plan? If I looked at the chart, I think you were projecting around eight years before you get to that particular phase?
That's correct.
How do your ROI projections compare with the town ones? Have we done a comparison yet to see? I'm sure you've got your own kind of ideas of what the revenue bases are going to be. Are we comparing notes here, or are we kind of doing independent evaluations and looking at that as?
Well, I'll speak for us first. I think we're looking at return on investment from a different perspective than perhaps you guys are. We're looking at the cost of services, cost of all of that, and I think you're got a different ROI.
Yeah, so I could, so the town's been, so realized, so typically, we, my firm also does impact analyses on the fiscal side. So rather than have two sets of competing numbers, we've been sort of sharing the numbers, because I would need to be getting them from the town anyway. And so without going into the details, because there's more data to be run on the town side, the assumptions are agreed to in the sense of common best practices. I'm not saying they're agreed to in the sense of just the fact that we like them. They are based on best practices professionally. We feel at the end of the day, with the level of, the kind of development, and Tom hit on this, that it's obvious that the more you can go towards your industrial and commercial, the better you can punch the numbers positively on, on positive fiscal and economic impacts. So we, we feel that not only in terms of order of magnitude, the size of this project and the revenues generated, but the actual net impacts are significant.
Yeah, I would just make up, we're, we're talking apples to apples. Our numbers don't look different from yours, and there are different factors.
Yeah, we don't want to get into competing numbers, because then it just confuses people.
Okay. This is maybe a loaded question, so if you want to answer this, I understand. What kind of contingencies do you guys have in plan for economic downturns? At 30 at development, you're going to see two or three downturns. How are you, are you guys thinking about? I'm sure you are, and if you don't want to share that, that's fine, but if you can, give us kind of an idea.
Are they built in?
Yeah.
Or are we hearing a best-case scenario?
Right.
Well, I think you're, you're looking at a, at a good-case scenario. I mean, we certainly understand that, you know, there are going to be some economic downturns. Financially, we're in a position where we, we'll be able to weather those. What it really means is that, you know, those numbers, the build-out numbers will slow down. Should we get a credit enhancement agreement agreed to and in place, you know, basically, if we don't perform, if we don't produce those numbers, we don't, we don't get the money back to, to repay us for all this infrastructure. So it's not something we're going to desire, but we're, we're prepared to, to deal with it.
Okay. So, and the 26, 265 million you guys have for infrastructure costs, are the inflation numbers built into that, or is that just 2016?
Today's dollars.
Just today, straight today? Does your timeframe depend on occupancy rates? Meaning like, let's say Pod One, you can't move to the next phase until you get 65, 70% occupancy, then you can go to the next one? Or do you have a kind of a fixed timeframe built in where you're just going to kind of keep steamrolling?
We should be able to keep steamrolling. We feel very, very sure that our Pod One is going to be a home run and will, will sell and fill quickly. Contrary to what you've read in the paper, we are not fully approved on Phase One. I'd love to say we were, but we're a little behind. Hope to be in front of the planning board in September and get, get an approval on that, so we can get going. But we feel very confident that that, that's going to go quickly, and that's going to help us continue on. But where we really need our next phase, the next phase that we want to happen is that light industrial phase. We need help to get there. We've got end users in place. I've come with council, I've told you that. We've got end users in place that are willing to go, they want to be working there in the spring, and we can do that if we have a partnership. Otherwise, we have to bring all of the utilities from Route One, and it's going to take us a long, long time to get there.
Any potential occupants that you know right now tax exempt? And if so, is that going to feed in, play into the calculations at all for tax revenue? I'm thinking more like treatment facilities or, you know, any kind of commercial occupancy that may be a quote-unquote "tax-exempt" status?
Senior housing, you referenced.
We have a potential one, one user in our light industrial pod that would be technically tax exempt, but I think the town would be pretty interested in having them.
Okay.
Not going to, not going to knock that way off.
No, no, no. Yeah, I just want to make sure we take those into consideration when we do our caps too, to have some kind of factor in there to take that into account. And these last two questions are more for Karen. Any downsides to developing a large TIF? I mean, does, does that mean that anything that goes in there needs a credit enhancement agreement, or we just have the option to offer a credit enhancement agreement?
So there are a couple of pieces to that. Right now, the, the credit enhancement agreement is contemplated for the developer. We, depending on what our final arrangements are, we have always planned to save some room for an additional credit enhancement agreement for an end user, but we don't, that's in our mind, that we should do that. But we do have, within the downtown TIF, that vehicle doesn't back us up against any other caps that would prevent us from doing credit enhancement agreements or TIFs in other parts of the town.
That was my question. All right. So, but anything, so let's say we have a very large downtown TIF, outside of the crossroads, obviously. If another developer wants to come in, do we, are we required to have a credit enhancement agreement to, to work in that TIF? We can just, it's zoned a certain way, that's it? We don't need to worry about credit enhancement. We have the option, but not a requirement?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks. And last one, if we have a certain geography of this downtown TIF, how difficult or is it possible to expand that geography at a later date, or once it's set, it's set?
You can always do an amendment with the Department of Economic and Community Development. I think we'd have to have good reason to articulate that, but I don't think they're, they're not necessarily looking to, they know economic development changes over time, and there may indeed be reasons to, to add additional areas.
But I'm just thinking the opposite. So if we keep that downtown TIF to a small area, it sounds like we'd want, we'd want to create as large a one as we can now and have that set versus say, we'll start small and we can always grow later if we need it.
I think our concept was that we really wanted the, to blend Oak Hill and the Downs. We didn't want to just do a downtown TIF on the Downs because that really, that doesn't, that doesn't encompass all of our downtown.
True.
As the, the long-range planning committee wants us to call it the town center, they don't like downtown. So town center is what we're really talking about. When we say downtown, it's only because of the legislature calls it that.
You said 375 acres of Downs in the TIF district?
Correct.
Not 500 acres?
That's correct. And so Dan and I are working along the edges. Some of the edges are wetlands, and there's really no reason to pull them in to the TIF.
And so the people who were trying to look at that map of what you have is, most all of the Downs are developable. Plus, from Route One, you have the business districts that we all see as the Oak Hill business districts.
Correct, the village centers.
From the Downs, all the way up through the Oak Hill intersection, all the way to Eaganai?
Yes, actually, a little bit past that. The village, the town and village center goes a little bit past that.
A little bit.
Maple Avenue.
Yeah.
Maple Avenue. And then, and behind Eaganai and that whole area.
Exactly. And that's one of the other reasons we wanted to include it, because we, we know that there is, there, there are parcels that are ready for infill development, and we wanted to have opportunity there.
And this is more semantics, I think, but why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we designate the TIF along zoned boundary lines and, and not run into situations kind of like we did with the crossroads district where we're blending geography based on creek positions or wetlands or things like that? Why wouldn't we have that whole?
Well, the only reason we, we were excluding wetlands there or, or some of the areas is because the district was starting to get pretty large, and we felt like, you know, there's really no reason to pull that in if we don't need to, so we can get some more feedback. I, I agree with you that it may be cleaner to include the entire Downs, but it's really about semantics. about semantics with DECD.
And there is a portion of the Downs property that's actually, has always been, in the HP TIF district. So, we would prefer keeping it there.
Okay.
It's going to perform and satisfy some.
For the public, for the public, that's the Hagus Parkway section. So, there's a little bit of it.
It's about 55 acres or so.
Thanks.
Good. Counsel, if you have.
Yeah, actually, Chris asked quite a few of the same questions. I do want to follow up with one question that counsel fully brought up regarding the transference. Can you, well, can the credit enhancement be transferred to another person, to another entity? Can you refresh my memory? Wasn't Cabela's and Gateway, wasn't that transferred, a portion of that? And that was an outside developer who transferred it to a local developer? Right? So, it is transferable.
Correct. It was, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, the agreement was, was with the New England Expedition, and it was, they were the ones who came to us, correct, and wanted to split it. So...
It's the reverse of the question that you had. I just wanted, that's the example that kind of automatically popped up.
Every credit enhancement agreement I've seen is assignable. And we have an attorney here specialized in, and I would expect that would be a component here. That value would have to be realized, whether it's this collection of developers or someone in the future.
Which is why I think you want to have those issues, you want to be confident in what you've got and what the conditions are that allow you to get, in the end, what you want. Because it's sort of trust, but verify.
And again, I would want to address our own counsel, nothing personal. Is it possible to have a restricted credit enhancement agreement that we would have to approve the transfer so that, you know, if, let's say, we didn't get certain assurances on the back end, or we had questions that we could? Or is it automatically transferable because it goes with the property, not with the individual?
I could pose that to attorney, but our attorney, but I suspect, you know, the old language shall not be unreasonably withheld would likely be the position. We should be comfortable with the deal points that we negotiate in Day 1, regardless of who we're dealing with. So, that's the key. We need performance measures and triggers to unlock what we want.
The other questions I had was, so some of the charts that were shown, one, it was a bar chart regarding distribution, like percentage distributions on population and kind of things. I think it said that 15.4% of the population is going to be represented within that particular community. The question I had was that, does that also include, is that just residential, or does it, doesn't include commuter and jobs?
No, that's just the people living in that, living in the district.
Okay. And so, this kind of ties into the next piece, and maybe the questions that I have are more about what hasn't been presented. Have, or will we receive an impact analysis about, you know, what does this do total? I mean, it's going to create, I think it said 2,500 to 3,100 jobs. If you think about the total commuter and the retail and the number of people that come in and the traffic flow, will that be coming forward as part of the analysis later?
We wouldn't be, we haven't been looking at, at traffic. I think that's part of what you would do in site plan. What we have been looking at are the cost of providing typical services, like the public works, you know, police, public safety.
School.
And school, yep. Yeah, so that's what we're, we've been focusing on, the town delivery of services.
I mean, right now, Route 1 is like a highway. I mean, that is a six-lane highway with each of the intersections. It's just, you can't even go on press, it's ridiculous. So, I'm just kind of curious on where those outlets are. So, that part's good. The other question I had was, thinking on a linear basis, the charts showed that there were $600 million in tax value with the partnership that generated $10.9 million. The part of the equation is, what is the total investment for the town to generate the 600 million and the 10.9? Do we know where, what that number is?
It's not investment. It would be done through a reimbursement of taxes paid.
You can choose whatever word you want, whether it's our investment back to the development or, you know, rebate, rebate. I mean, what is the total cost of the CEA in comparison to generating that tax value and that tax income?
We have not finalized that number yet.
That will result from the negotiation.
Right.
And further deliberation by the council to say, where is a consensus? Where is a comfort level? And what we're prepared to do.
So, the second piece to that is that, in comparison to the 225 million, is, what are the two, what's, on 225, what is our investment or our contribution, whatever, if you want to look at that? And then, what is the tax generated from 225 million in comparison? To me, that's an apples-to-apples kind of.
Sean, I did that. That's 4.1 million is the, assuming the same tax revenue.
You think it's 4.1?
Yeah.
Okay.
It sounds right. The other thing that's not shown here, we could run our, the same kind of impact analysis in terms of cost to provide services. Remember, that shorter perspective went from, what, 20% residential to 40? Not only will we get less tax revenue, I'm quite certain the cost of services would exceed what they are or be similar to what they are at the desired.
Well, that's the third part of the evaluation. Yeah. Because, you know, it goes back to, I think, one of the first bullets that you showed, that it was a net, or it was a positive impact where revenue exceeded.
Right. At the, at the...
Yes.
At the 600.
Yes, at the $600 million.
So, what is it at the 225? So, that's kind of a.
And that's part of what we need to do now. We've been running these numbers, and so, we're, we're going to be catching up with them over the next week with, with the new numbers.
Any other questions that you have to answer?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess similarly, I have the same question about the numbers. I did the math, too, thinking, yeah, exactly that. What is the investment to get the 600 million versus the 225 would be really helpful, just as you've plotted out how that grows over time. It'd be really interesting to see what is our investment over time that matches that. And again, I think, I think, I think the public needs to know, there is no free lunch. I'm guessing, it sounded like, at least I'm just checking this, the extraordinary, extraordinary cost of 150 million is part of that negotiation. The community center would be part of that negotiation, so we're probably talking 150 million plus. But those numbers would be really important to have as we start this conversation. Secondly, as kind of request, I would think, one concern I have, I think we have a tremendous fiduciary responsibility as a town council. We're looking at taking taxpayers' money. If we're talking about $150 million over 30 years, that's a significant number. First question I have is, have we checked with all our, who are we using for business consultants? One, I want to make sure what impact, I know Hagus potentially has an impact on our bond rating. I'd be curious about whether this deal has any impact on the bond rating as we're looking at a $60 million school down the road. Two, who are we using for sort of developmental advice? When I look around the town council on the table, I know I'm woefully inadequate at trying to analyze this deal. I've never seen anyone, any deal like this. As you said, this could be the biggest one for Scarborough or the state. I think we need some business consultants that are impartial and independent as our consultants to say, have we nailed this? Have we not? So, I kind of request that we do that. Secondly, we talked about the ballpark number. Absolutely, I think, again, that those numbers by year, the services that we're going to deliver. So, our, our net credit enhancement, we should keep enough of that, that covers those incremental services by year. So, it'd be good to see that chart. And then, thirdly, and most importantly, based on the emails I've gotten, what have we, I think we need to think about in a month's time? How do we get our community involved? I think they have lots of questions. I think they have, at least I've seen a lot of concerns expressed. So, I think we need to collectively think about, how do we engage the community and get their input in the timeframe we're talking about? Because I'd rather have them with us than not. So, I think it's critical that we figure out how we do that.
You'll sit for the moment? Karen, you talked about a ripple effect. Have you contemplated what the ripple effect of the statistical analysis that this will have on the town? When you say 2,500 to 3,100 jobs, you're not talking about at Scarborough Downs, are you?
We are, based on that square footage.
And that was why I was a little confused. What sort of ripple effect occurs when you add 15% of the population of the town and you add this much commercial and industrial and spending power? What's, what's going to happen around, directly geographically around or throughout the whole town? Have we looked at that at all?
We've not put numbers to that yet, and we will by the next, by the next meeting, looking at really what the multiplier effect is on a per-job basis. And I'm not willing to speculate on my own. If you are...
The question's a very good one, if I may. So, because, so A, the answer is, those are direct jobs that are based on the square footage developed at the Downs. An economic impact analysis would then put multipliers to them to say, how many additional jobs outside those direct jobs will be further generated by new spending, new businesses outside of the Downs? And that, that could easily be done.
Yeah. You can do that, yeah. It's pretty straightforward.
Because I know, we have a policy, we set our budget in May, and then we wait till August to see what kind of growth has occurred in the community. And, and we have a policy in place that presumes it's the 10-year running average of the previous 10 years, and that's around about $40 million a year. Well, what I'm really wondering is, this ripple effect, what's going to happen throughout the rest of the town? Because the rest of the town, is it going to just sort of remain the same? Or is there going to be a growth that we're not even talking about?
I, I'm going to say, from the standpoint of the types of users, the types of development that's going to happen, you are going to see a ripple effect through the community. There's more people to use existing services. It's going to drive more business in Oak Hill. It's going to drive more business, I think, throughout the community. We, the Downs folks were kind enough to come to the Chamber of Commerce, their annual meeting, and talk about that very issue. And you can look around the Black Point Inn where they were, were having a meeting, and almost every person there was from a business, sort of was nodding their heads about the potential positive impact it could have on local businesses. And we need to put some, some numbers to that.
And Peter's question really gets to one of the things that we're all interested in, that is, making sure the community actually understands what's going on here. Because this is big.
Right.
And, and maybe things like the Chamber of Commerce or other events, reaching out where, because we have people who have been very forthcoming, the Scarborough Downs team has been very forthcoming in trying to say, this is what we're trying to do. And I think perhaps we need to sort of schedule things in so that other community groups are getting the opportunity for their membership and constituents to understand this so that we get more feedback. Other questions? Katie?
Kind of along the same lines. So, for me, my greatest worry or concern is, as we've heard several people mention, you know, this is the hugest project we've ever seen, and will probably have the largest impact on what our town looks like for many, many, many years to come. So, but we want to make a decision in like 35 days. But we don't have those details yet. And we don't have, you know, you mentioned the council is, you know, a piece of that negotiating those final numbers, and yet, I have no idea what those numbers are even roughly right now, what's being negotiated, negotiated. So, I just, I don't want us to miss an opportunity to do this right because we're in a hurry to hit this. I think doing it right is more important, even if it takes us another week or two, that we have enough time with the information to be thoughtful and mindful in all of our decisions and sharing and getting the community's support.
I think we all share that view of better to get it right than to try and necessarily follow a specific schedule. We've already been pushing back the schedule to add in more workshop time. We are scheduling an August 21st executive session where we will have our council present to be able to answer some of the tough questions about what we can and can't do and require so that the negotiating team, which has been primarily Tom and Karen, and I, and our attorney, and I've been along for the ride, but this has been very much an educational process for me. So, I understand why the other counselors here are saying, wow, it's a lot. Well, we're, we're going to continue to engage one-on-one, where councils are going to be able to have the opportunity to meet with the town manager and the executive director of our, of our Economic Development Council. And we will have the session next Tuesday, the 21st, as well as others, if necessary. And we are going to continue to work towards making sure everyone is comfortable knowing what this, this deal is.
I wonder if the development team could speak to the issue of time?
Can I jump in on that?
Sure.
So, I think people, I completely understand what you folks are saying about, about time, but time is very important to us. I think people have to understand that, you know, this property was zoned in the crossroads zone based on the 2006 comp plan. And it's really, it's a very good zone. It's very liberal, allows us to do a lot of things. We've been working on this project, and we've owned it since January, but we literally have been working on it since last fall. And we've put a lot of time into trying to figure out what is the highest and best use. And when we put that on paper and we come down and we work through all of the numbers, we know that we have to have a partnership and we have to have a credit enhancement agreement in order to achieve those goals. I'll be honest with you, that we haven't spent any other time thinking about, you know, what, is there another way to do it? We like to hit it out of the park. I mean, we like to, like to do really, really good, solid projects. And, and I think what we're showing you tonight is a solid project. Obviously, there's a lot of work. We're going to need a lot of public input to get to the point where we know exactly what we're building. But we've given you a pretty good idea of what can be done, and we need, you know, we need a partnership on that. Time is important to us. We have users that want to go in that light industrial zone. If we can't meet their timeframe, we're not, we're just not going to get there. And the time for that, the approval process, we're, we're in front of the planning board, I think, at the next meeting with our master plan on that area. And, you know, we're moving as quickly as we can through the process, and it takes time. There's many planning board meetings, there's the State of Maine, DEP's involved, there's a six-month process with them to get that approved. So, it's important to us to have this in place so that we can get our financing in place and get this, get this next phase going.
Other questions?
I just have one comment I'd like to add, Rocky. You know, I'd encourage all the council and anybody else that's concerned to take a look around the surrounding communities, and I'm surprised that I haven't heard anybody be concerned about how Scarborough's competing in the region. And I would encourage everyone here to take a look at how we do compete in the region and what other TIF deals are going on, because we do as developers, and we are a significant competitive disadvantage without any TIF action and credit enhancement action. And the things that we're looking for and that we've been negotiating for the record do not exceed any TIF or credit enhancement agreement that have been arranged historically. So, I would encourage everybody to think about the town of Scarborough's ability to compete in the region itself, because it is a competitive set out there, and it's very, very critical to us. We would appreciate that kind of support as well. Please.
That'd be a great data, that'd be a great dataset to have, something that we could get in front of us, some kind of research on what's been done in.
And I just think that, I appreciate that comment, and it, exactly. And it kind of supports what I was saying, is you guys have been eating, breathing, sleeping, living this every single minute of every single day. So, you know it like the back of your hand. And we, obviously, as the governing body, have to make those decisions and give you the vote, so we need to understand it, too. That's all I'm asking for.
I respect that very much.
Thank you. Other, other input before we close? Thank you, everyone. We'll recess and read the media in about two minutes. We'll recess and reconvene in about two minutes.